Alyssa, she was doing the hardest part. And we are assembled here today for the City of Oxford Board of Commissioners Agenda Meeting. Today is Monday, November 30th, 2020. It is 5:33 PM and we are assembled via Zoom, which means that I need to do an oral roll call with each of you. So I am going to start on the screen, going as you are on my screen to my right. And so Commissioner Tovey, are you here? You got to unmute.
Yes.
Hey, okay, that's great. Commissioner Curran.
I'm here.
Commissioner Bullock.
Yeah.
Great. Commissioner Fields.
Here.
Okay, and that is it that I have for right now. So we do have a majority of the board.
Mayor Protem is here. I see him on my screen.
Oh, right. Okay, I'm so sorry. Mayor Protem Harris, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, I apologize. Just happens. Okay, well then let's carry on and hopefully Commissioner Gilreath and Commissioner Bridges will be able to join us. And so the only thing that we have on our agenda tonight is to set the agenda for next week, and it is fairly straightforward. Does, you know, standard prayer pledged by Commissioner Gilreath and so on. Any questions on that? Okay, then we move forward to delegations, which we will have. I'm sorry, Commissioner Bullock, did you say something?
No, I did not.
Okay. Presentation of our crime report by Chief Colley. Any questions at this point about that? Okay, and then we move forward to city business, which is to consider adopting the agenda and regular board meeting dates for 2021. And you have that in your attachment. Any questions at this point about that?
No.
Okay, and then we move to item five, which is the discussion item about a public pool. We had an excellent recreation committee meeting about that. Mayor Protem, is there anything that you would like to add at this point on this item?
No ma'am.
Okay.
Are we discussing, are we going to discuss just the pool or we're going to discuss the master plan?
Yep, let's linger there for just a minute, Mayor. Tina, is that item now necessary on the agenda in light of what transpired at our recreation committee meeting? Was it there as a placeholder? What was the reason or purpose it was there?
Well, I think in case the discussion needed to be continued, we were going to leave it there. It was not the master plan. It was just the pool discussion.
Right.
We can.
The master plan is coming back in January, correct?
Yeah, we can.
Is that kind of what we were talking about?
Yeah.
Would there be value in bringing the master plan back? And of course, that, you know, Mayor Protem, if you want to speak to that now, but if there, you know, would there be interest in bringing the master plan back after today's discussion and the update to the Hicks Field Plan? Mayor Protem, do you have any interest in bringing that back on to the agenda to discuss for approval or not so much?
Well, I'll be honest with you. I think we probably need to wait to January to see what the plan is going to be, because I'm sure they, the Ms. Cheek and Mr. Thorn haven't had time to complete it the way that they want to. So, and it's actually up to them, you know, I mean, if they can have it ready by next week, you know, and enough time for all the commissioners and mayor and to have time to review it. I'm fine with it, but I personally would like to wait till January, but.
I think January is fine.
Right, okay.
Yeah, I don't really think we're going to have much more than what we had today as far as, you know, additional research into companies that may be able to facilitate the the plan or feasibility study or anything along those lines and can give us information that will add enough value to it to warrant, you know, trying to put it on there next week.
You're saying you don't have any addition, you won't have anything more to add to it for next week? Is that what Jack just understood?
Yeah, probably unlikely that we're going to meet that sort of a timeframe and get anything additional back to you to add significant value to warrant its placement on there at this time other than what we spoke, you know, about this afternoon at today's recreation meeting.
Okay.
And also I just wanted to say that that's why I asked earlier today, did we want to take it off? But January, so that item can be removed, Mayor.
Okay. Everybody's good with that? Satisfied with the discussion that we had?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm satisfied with the discussion we had, but if we're going to put it off until January, I would like to see more numbers. You know, you know, we talk about what we can afford and can't afford. Well, I'd like to know more specific in terms of cost so that we don't get to January and then somebody makes a motion or tries to put it off another two months. So if we're going to put it off till January, I hope plenty of information to sort of know what we're looking at relative to costs.
So I think, and anybody jump in and correct me if you, I need to be corrected, but I think Commissioner Bridges, what we were talking about is whether we approve the master plan, but the manager was saying, and I think Mayor Protem was saying, that by January, could you come back with some information about doing a feasibility study? I think it would be a lot, the feasibility study is what would convey information about costs for a variety of options to give the board options to discuss, but that you don't necessarily have to wait to approve the master plan until you've completed the feasibility study. Am I correct in my understanding of that?
Yes, ma'am.
So approving the master plan would make it in concrete or more or less in the plan that there is the desire for the board and the next, to do a pool and the next step would be to do a feasibility study that clarifies all of the cost options for the board to weigh and measure.
So we don't know whether or not we want to do a feasibility study until January? I mean, if you ask me right now whether or not I'd like to have a feasibility study done, I would say yes.
Yep, I think we already got that. We would probably be sending out an RFP or preparing a request for proposals to complete, you know, a feasibility study and do those things. So, you know, all I'm saying is that's not going to be ready by next Tuesday night. If we want to put the master plan on there as amended, including the pool, you know, that's one thing. But, you know, if the board anticipates and expects having numbers for swimming pools and, you know, all the additional amenities or wants to have some conversation about, you know, municipal bond referendum or all these kinds of things, we're not prepared for that, not by next week.
I guess my question would be, would we be ready by January?
We'll be as ready as we can possibly be to be prepared for anything and everything that this board expects and wants us to do. And right now, what we understand is that the board wants us to move forward in as practical a fashion as we possibly can with getting a better understanding of what a pool is going to cost the citizens of the City of Oxford, and that's what we're doing.
You know, okay, so what's going to happen in January? You know, maybe I'm just missing it. I, you know, so we're going to, it's November 30th now. In January, what is supposed to, what are we supposed to get in January?
Well, let me, let me turn that back around and ask what the board expects to get in January. Our expectation is to have the master plan back in front of you as requested by the recreation committee amended that includes the pool as part of the Hicks complex recreation master plan. And from this afternoon, we were talking about, you know, the pool itself and what it would cost and what we liked and what we didn't like. And, you know, being an outdoor pool that could move to phase two, that would be covered and all those types of things. I mean, there are a lot of unknowns in all of that. And in order to get to that point, you know, we're taking steps to get there. And the first step was to have the pool represented on the Hicks master plan. And that would be the next step in all of this and getting that to the board, that it shows and exhibits it and you adopt it. And now we have a master plan for the Parks and Recreation for the City of Oxford, which basically qualifies us or allows us to be qualified for applying for, you know, grants, funding for any of those amenities that we would want to move forward with. So, you know, it is a bit of a process and I gather that. And I understand that, you know, the board wants to move forward as quickly as they can and will work as diligently as we possibly can towards that end. But, you know, the next step is to get the master plan approved with the pool on it or represented on it and be working towards probably putting together a request for proposals for companies to present their qualifications for completing a feasibility study to present to the City of Oxford for, you know, a swimming pool so that we can better understand what we're facing, what the costs are and what we want in turn during that same period of time.
So the master plan, will that have time, a timeline along with it, Mr. Manager or Ms. Cheek? Like, like, so it's the master plan?
No, it will not.
Okay.
It's, and it's, it's actually two documents. And they are, unless the document that I showed you this afternoon, since we don't know if we want an indoor pool right now or an outdoor pool, what's shown on the Hicks complex plan is the indoor pool as part of the Recreation Center and Aquatic Center. So at this point, that's, that's really all, unless you say, no, I'd rather have it, we'd rather have an outdoor pool, then I could possibly get that footprint changed to show an outdoor pool. And then there's the overall comprehensive Parks and Recreation Master Plan, which is the hundred and some page document that we went over. That's really not part of this conversation, but it didn't get approved, I think, because of this conversation with the pool. So there's two documents that need to be approved. And then next is the feasibility study and getting that information together for y'all. So we have costs and that sort of thing to know how much that's going to be. The RFP is how much the feasibility study is going to be. So the master plan could come back a little bit sooner. The comprehensive master plan could come back sooner. So could the sketch plan, the Hicks complex plan, that could come back as well. But again, that document can be changed. So if, you know, we're showing an aquatic center on it right now, but if, you know, if y'all decided you want a indoor pool or an outdoor pool, then that could be changed down the road because you would actually be doing your part of the project and you would do a whole new plan for that. So that's kind of certain, we're kind of talking about three different, three different things.
So in theory, we could, this board could approve in dissent next week the current master plan with the updated Hicks Field Plan, which shows the pool inside the aquatic center and also give instruction to the manager and you to start the process of gathering information to create a feasibility study. Because in my mind, I also imagine that the recreation committee might be part of the discussion for what goes to a firm that does a feasibility study rather than just having it done and coming back and then people saying, but I wanted information about this or that. Conceivably, there could be a separate process. The recreation committee and anybody else who chooses to attend can be there to discuss what are the elements that we want to be addressed in a feasibility study and then instruct you all to go forth and bring back some options about who would be engaged. Is that, is that a reasonable proposition? That the board could approve the master plan, which opens up options for you to be alert to funding opportunities for support in any way and at the same time say, we want forward motion on the feasibility study on this very particular item?
See, me personally, I, I'm not inclined to that. That's just me. Because, you know, it's one thing to have something on paper, but to have a date attached to it is another. So this can has been kicking down the road for years and it's time to sit the can up and go ahead and put something in place. So that's why I asked about the timeline. You know, it's good for us to have a plan and you're planning something out, but we need it. You know, we need to know when, what is going to happen, when it's going to happen. Because that's how I envision a plan. Now, if I'm wrong, that's, you know, just like the downtown master plan.
But there's no timeline, there's no timeline on the downtown master plan. The downtown master plan is concepts. And then after the master plan was adopted, there was work done over a period of time to establish a strategic plan that would in fact look at items in the downtown master plan and start to put measurable goals on them.
So if I could have finished, I would say, that's okay. I was, that's what I was going to say, just like the master plan, there are goals and there are benchmarks in place. We don't have that here.
But that, that's my point, is that the master plan was not adopted with those, the timelines in place. The master plan was, if you, it was that unfoldable document that had the drawings and the concepts and some general precepts, which are also included in the recreation master plan. The timeline, and there still isn't a timeline. One of the top things in the downtown master plan is undergrounding the lights. And there's been no timeline put on that because it's such a massive project. And I hear what you're saying, but I think that's the point of a feasibility study, to come on the heels of the master plan because the feasibility study gives the board the opportunity to hear additional information about the, you know, that's when you hear, this is what it would cost to do an outdoor pool. This is what it would cost to do an outdoor pool of this type. This is what it would cost to do an outdoor pool with a print that allows you to do a retractable roof. It puts all of those things and then, and this is how long it would take. And that's when the board sits down and looks at the timeline and what it wants to do and how to get started.
And doing the feasibility study for the pool first, you would typically do it, you could do it for the entire sketch plan that's Hicks. And as Commissioner Bridges said earlier today, that he wants the, the pool to be the priority in this. And you definitely choosing the pool to be what you do the feasibility study on, you're showing that that is, you know, your priority. That's the first thing that you're really wanting to delve into and get the, down to the nitty gritty and how much, how much it's going to be. And like the mayor said, then you can actually decide, you know, how much you want to spend and what we need to change and that sort of thing. So the feasibility is the big first step for the pool.
So with that, is there a desire to wait until January to consider the master plan? Or am I understanding you, Mayor Protem, that you are proposing not to do, not to bring the master plan for, up for adoption until we've completed a feasibility study?
No, that's not what I'm saying. And I'm, what, what the manager just said, that he didn't, you know, whatever he could have, the information that he could have available. I don't feel like we should put a strain on them to try to have something by next week.
Okay.
You know, that, that's all I'm saying, you know, if, did I hear you correct, Mr. Thornton, that it would be kind of a strain or it would be not much difference or?
Yes, it would certainly be a strain on us to get anything prepared that showed an ability to do any feasibility study for the pool. It would not be a strain on us to have prepared the amended master plan document if the board wanted to move forward with adopting it. That would not be an issue. Okay.
I just have a question. Can we, in January, vote on the master plan and agree that a feasibility study is done?
I have it.
Can we do both of those then?
Alyssa.
I think you can.
Okay, all right. Well, you know, I don't have a problem waiting till January. I mean, you know, I just simply, I, I, I would, I think that we can agree on the master plan and I would like us to start the feasibility study as soon as possible so that we can begin to see numbers, so that we can begin to sort of have a idea of what we're getting into and what the costs are. Because when we get that information, I think some of us commissioners will have a better feeling about what the city is capable of doing. But if I don't see any numbers, I mean, if you ask me how much that pool that we looked at today costs, I probably couldn't guess a good number, but it'd be kind of nice to know what those things cost. And I just didn't think we had to wait until after January to get some numbers. But I don't have a problem with us voting on the master plan and then hopefully voting on whether or not we do a feasibility study.
Understood.
Okay, um, so with that, this item will be removed from the agenda next week. And it was awesome. Thank you, everybody, for this discussion. I would also, for the record, because I think when we were calling the role at that time, it should be clear, Commissioner Kwan Bridges has joined the meeting and also Commissioner Gilreath and Commissioner Bridges has spoken. But Commissioner Gilreath, can I just hear a yay, I am here from you for the record? You're on mute.
I'm here. Thank you. Sorry about technical problems.
It seems to be the story of our lives, so don't worry about that. We're just glad that you're here with us. So thank you very much. And with that, we move forward to accept the consent agenda, which is accepting the November finance report from our finance director and approving the November minutes. Any conversation about that? And then, so with that, I'm going to ask if anybody has anything, oh, I will go, so I don't forget, we do have, this coming Fri- Friday is the reverse parade. So I hope, I haven't had a chance to read my long email yet from Alyssa about that, but I hope you all will be there with bells and caps on, ready to break out in a new way for the residents and stakeholders of Oxford. And I think there is going to be a virtual lighting of the greens that Mary is working on that is going to be Thursday night in addition to the dates to remember as far as office closings. And with that, well, let me ask, Mary Young, do you have anything that you would like to add about those events? Because I see you're here.
Yes, I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, the biggest thing to know, if you're planning on being in the parade, please bring a lawn chair, just so that we can make sure that everybody's comfortable because all you're going to do is wave and smile. Great, big, thank you, Mr. Bridges. That's how I want you to smile and wave. And we have a truck, we'll have commissioners either in the truck or on the ground and we have a few in their golf carts. We'll have signs that recognize you as commissioners and of course as mayor. So please participate if you can. Everybody will be distanced. We are asking everyone to wear their masks, so. And we have lights that will make sure our, our chief of, fire chief has made sure that we have plenty of light, so everything and everyone will be visible.
That's great.
I know we got an email on this that I haven't looked at yet, but what location should we arrive at to be, to participate in the reverse parade?
So you're going to be at McClanahan and Lanier. You will be one of the first set of vehicles or first set of spaces and then we'll give you direction accordingly from there.
Okay.
Yep, Mary, can we send that again? Send out the instructions one more time?
Yes, and I'll make that very clear where you're going to meet. I actually didn't send that, so I'll make sure what, what got sent. I'll get a copy of that and make sure that we update it.
Okay, great. Thank you. Commissioner Fields, did you raise your hand?
No, I didn't.
Okay, then I'm going to go ahead and start with Mayor Protem. Is there anything that you would like to add?
No ma'am.
Okay, and I apologize again for cutting you off tonight. I apologize for that. Um, starting at my right, Commissioner Curran, anything you would like to add?
No.
Commissioner Bullock. Now you're good. No, there. No, you're muted. Go unmute. Okay. You're, we, you're still muted.
If Cindy would leave me alone, I could get on this thing.
I didn't do it. It wasn't me, I promise.
Perhaps I've missed it, but Tuesday night, I would like to hear an update of what, if anything, has been done with the armory. That's another thing that's gone down the road, kicked the can. I forgot what the analogy was. But I'd like to hear what we've done, if anything, or what we plan to do on the armory. Now turn me off.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Field?
No.
Commissioner Bridges?
Yeah, I would just simply say that I've already received two phone calls about the stop sign, the new stop signs. And all, and all I can say is, you know, not, it wasn't positive stuff. But, you know, it is what it is, but I've already received two phone calls, all right.
So I would like to make a comment about that. I sent Commissioner Curran and, and our manager pictures. I happened to be in Asheville last week. And one of the things I noticed when I was there is that they have these little mini islands. I mean, that some of them don't look like they're bigger than my desk here at City Hall. And they're in the middle of the road and they have clearly been installed to slow traffic as people near an intersection. So I think with time that people will adjust to the stop signs. There's no question where they are. That's a blind curve for anybody who's coming out of Parker. But I also was very curious as to whether or not, if at any point we, we were able to do it, we could consider doing a physical thing like that, that actually just makes people slow down because the lane is narrowed.
Anybody that gets a call about it, I would be glad to talk and discuss it with anybody that wants to talk about the stop sign.
I can handle it just fine. Don't worry, I can handle it.
Probably because they don't really want to talk to me about it.
Okay, great, thank you. Oh, man, John, Toby, you just, I was about to call you and you bounced off. So Commissioner Gilreath?
Well, I apologize for having all my technical difficulties with every device I own. But I guess I was concerned about, what was our follow-up with the Elmwood, Elmwood donation? Are we moving forward or was the offer off the table?
Mr. Manager?
We are moving forward. It, it's, it's moving forward. It was put back in the requester's lap that if he wished to move it forward, that it'd all be done at his expense.
So does that mean we vote on it at some point to accept it or how does that work?
Technically, the code of ordinances puts the responsibility for the cemetery under the city manager.
Madam Mayor, we, we are moving forward with that. I've, I've requested Mr. Crawford to, to have the survey redrawn showing the particular lots that his family wants, so that there's no ambiguity about that. And he's agreed to do that, but I don't have the new survey yet.
Excellent, thank you. Commissioner Gilreath, is that enough information for now or do you have any further questions?
Oh, I was just curious. I, I, I thought we will vote on it according to, I think, I've read that someplace. And I, I couldn't remember voting on it, that's all.
So I guess it would be once the, once we know for sure, or as the manager is saying, the cemetery is under his direct purview. So I think what he's saying is that if there is no expense to the city, there's no need for the board to vote on it. But if, at this point, if going forward in order to complete the transaction, there is money required by the city to be expended, the manager would bring it to the board. Am I correct in understanding that?
Yes, ma'am. And if the, if the board so desires, I'll certainly report back to you what essentially transpires with that. We'll follow all the guidelines and make sure that everything that's in the code of ordinances regarding cemeteries is followed. And if the board so desires, we'll certainly report that back to you, but it does not require a, a vote by the board.
Okay. Well, well, I have one other question. Maybe I missed it. Follow-up with regards to the monies that Cheryl, Ms. Hart was, was applying for? Where are we in that process and?
We just got the money released to us officially by the federal government. As a matter of fact, I got a copy of the letter this morning that we have now been, it's been released to us to utilize under the CDBG guidelines. So hopefully Cheryl can provide us with some updated information about where that's heading in a revised schedule.
So that was, when, that's pretty amazing. When were we awarded the, when did, because she just submitted that?
No, we submitted that, it's been quite some time ago. We actually.
Okay, time flies.
No, it wasn't two months ago because the actual date on the letter, the letter was delayed us receiving it, but the date on the letter is September the 15th. So it's been, it's been some time ago that we sought the application for the two, the $750,000.
So how much did we get?
750, as far as I know. The other money that we are seeking is from, is, is an additional coronavirus, wrapped up CDBG funding. This one was something that we applied for more than a year ago that was going to rehabilitate like 11 homes.
Right, so that's a different, I think Commissioner Gilreath was talking about the coronavirus, CDG, CBGD.
I don't know that we've heard anything on that one at this point in time.
Okay, well, 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 I, I was really asking about the, the latest one that we were talking about helping folks with mortgages and fees and waters. I think it's my, was my issue at the time. And, and we, the, the point that I remember most is that we didn't want to have any conflicts about who was providing what services because that would interfere with what Cheryl was, was attempting to do. And I was just asking for follow-up based upon that money, whatever. And I thought it was the CDGB monies.
It was, it was, but we also applied for community development block grant money to rehabilitate, you know, dilapidated housing here in Oxford.
Not talking about that money.
Yeah, exactly. But it's community development block grant money umbrella, all the same. And we've not, well, I've not heard. We'll have Cheryl prepared to answer that question Tuesday evening since I don't see her here.
That's good news.
If not, if not before.
So we, we do not yet know whether or not she's heard back. And I think when we were first discussing it, um, she felt like she might not hear till the end of the year, but certainly. So we don't, we don't know about the funding on that, but she'll report on that on Tuesday night?
Yep, I can have her do so or provide you that information in form of email even sooner. But here's the letter that I got today about September 4th, excuse me, it was September 14th, 2020, that says your grant, your grants, community development block grant funds are to be obligated, extended and closeout documents are to be submitted to Commerce in accordance with the dates noted in the Executed Grant Agreement Schedule section. Basically tells us that we can proceed. As a result, the CDBG funds for Grant 17C 2994 are released. So we can now move forward with those, those home rehabilitations.
Okay. Thank you. Are you, are you set, Commissioner Gilreath?
Yeah, I think we're talking about different things though.
Right, what, the letter he read is for a previous grant, but he will have Ms. Hart prepared to speak to your question next Tuesday.
That will, yeah, that will be fun, thank you.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a follow-up question to Ms. Gilreath's inquiry.
Yes.
Yeah, how do you, how do you determine which houses will be rehabbed? I mean, is there, is there an application process? How is it done?
I think there was an inquiry opportunity as well as, you know, we sought to identify some as well through surveying the community. But I think that we advertised in the paper and on our website about, you know, the opportunity to potentially qualify for the program.
Thank you. And Commissioner Bullock, regarding your question about the armory, Mr. Thornton, is that something that you want to respond to now?
Honestly, I would be glad to respond tomorrow as I have a meeting on that topic tomorrow. And we'll, we'll see, you know, where that goes. So the inquiry is apropos. I think Commissioner Bullock may have ESP and ESPN2 and a few other channels because I've been thinking the same thing, that it's, you know, we're going to try to move something along with the armory and its potential utilization that would hopefully be well received. So I have a meeting tomorrow at 2 o'clock to discuss that very topic with some folks. And if there is interest in it, then I will report that to the board. And I believe there will be.
Commissioner Bullock, is that something that, I mean, is that something that can be reported to the board in an email or discussed next week? Is there one or the other venue that is more appropriate or preferred, Commissioner Bullock?
Number one, I'd just like to hear an update of what's happening. You know, we've had this on, on the books for a long time. It was a question of joint ownership with the county and that got straightened out. We've had an offer on it. I'm not questioning whether it was a good or bad offer, but that's gone by. We had the Greenfield study that we're tied into it, that's gone by. I would like to hear something and my personal preference would be next Tuesday night, so it could be made public.
Okay, that's great. That works for you, Mr. Manager?
Yep, I'll be glad to report anything that I can report pending the approval of the other party that would be involved in this.
Okay, that's great.
Regarding that particular partnership.
Thank you. And then last but not least, John Toby, you've been moving all over my screen. Do you have anything that you would like to bring up, Commissioner Toby?
No, I've been having severe problems with the internet tonight and this afternoon and tonight. I keep losing you, I have to keep rejoining it and I can't hear anything. I heard Mr. Commissioner Bullock's request. That's a good request to find out what is going on with the armory, but nothing else. Except beware, if you're driving down Forest Road, there are two new stop signs.
I, I think I had the privilege of watching the very first person run that stop sign because I came running around this morning and the guys had already installed the one as you go towards Tranquil. So it was, it was on, on my side of Parker. And they had installed the one on the other side, but the truck was a little bit in front of it. And, and the person went zipping by and I said to Roger, oh, I, I think that's our, our first customer. And, uh, yeah, well, but you know, once upon a time, we never wore seat belts. And now we all probably feel naked if we get in the car without a seatbelt. I mean, when I think about driving around, oh my, when I was a kid. So we can do this.
Right.
Absolutely. Okay, I think I've been through everybody. Mr. Attorney, do you have anything you need to bring up?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Thornton, anything else on your mind?
No, other than to convey that at the new intersection or new three-way intersection, lights are blinking out there quite brightly. So hopefully that draws motorists' attention to the fact that there are, it is a three-way stop. I went out there early this morning before they installed it and went back right after lunch and it had been installed. So, you know, there's a little bit of an adjustment period there, I'm sure. Because I think the person behind me as I proceeded to come up Parker went right through it. But anyway, we'll, we'll get there, we'll get there. I do want to say thank you to those that had the opportunity to come out to the employee appreciation luncheon. Thank you. I know that the employees appreciated the fact that there were board members there handing out box lunches to everyone. So I do thank you for that, so appreciate it. And also on a personal note, I hope that everybody had a great Thanksgiving. And we appreciated the opportunity to give thanks, you know, around our house. And I'm sure that everybody enjoyed the, the time off. So thank you for that and appreciate you coming out and turning out for that and hope you enjoyed the food.
Absolutely. Thank you for doing that. And I apologize that I was, I was previously scheduled to be out of town, so was not able to attend. But on behalf of all of the board, did write everybody that was being recognized for longevity, a note, a personal note on behalf of, of all of us. So tried to at least have a little bit of a presence. But Commissioner Curran, you said that food was mighty tasty? Who, who catered it?
Let's see, I cooked the ham, fire department cooked the turkeys, Cindy cooked the barbecue. And we had who provide the vegetables and the stuffing?
Who did the vegetables?
Family Diner did the, the dressing and vegetables.
Wow.
We economized as best we could.
Did they do the, did they do their peach cobbler? No, I'm telling you that peach cobbler is to die for. I don't think there's anybody in the world that can make peach cobbler as like she does. Well, Cindy, do you have anything to say?
I do, Mayor. I wanted to say that our second annual food drive was a huge success. We were able to give food to four families. And they were very, very appreciative. I understand one of the ladies cried, she had three children. And they not only got about three boxes of food apiece, they all got a turkey as well. So they, they were very appreciative.
Wonderful.
And now we're in the middle of our toy drive.
So tell us, tell us how you determine where the toys you collect go.
We are going to do, just like we did with the food drive, we are going to ask the, ask social services because they have a long, long list of needy people. And so depending on how many toys we get, we will be asking them for a list of children that may not get anything this Christmas.
Aunt, excuse me, am I correct? You want the toys unwrapped so you can, and are there, do you have?
Right, so they can identify if, if it's a boy toy or a girl toy. And I know you're not supposed to do that anymore, but, yeah, so, so we don't give some little macho little boy a doll, you know? Now, if a little boy wants a doll, we'll be happy to give him one, but.
So you do want them wrapped, but identified by gender and age?
Unwrapped, unwrapped.
Okay, perfect. Okay, great. And is there any age limit?
No.
Okay.
No, ma'am. Can be baby stuff, it can be on up to, to teenage.
Okay, excellent, thank you. So anything I see, Mary, Hawk? Alyssa, anybody else have anything else that they would like to bring up before we adjourn? And Tina, I apologize, Tina. Okay, well, if y'all are good, then I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion, I think that was, was that Commissioner Curran? Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, then we have to do the roll call vote. So I'm going to start. So I'm gonna start to my right, which is Commissioner Curran.
Yes.
Commissioner Bullock?
Yes.
Commissioner Bridges?
Yes.
Commissioner Gilreath? Get on mute.
Yes.
You're on muted. Did you wave to me, John?
Oh, no, you're not talking.
Okay, that's a yes, cause I can't hear you.
Yes.
Oh, I heard yes. Okay, Commissioner Fields?
Yes.
And am I, I, looks like, does anybody else see Mayor Protem? I do not. Okay, so it looks like he exited. And with that, we will say unto all, a good night. Be safe and sound. And thank you, everyone, for your patience and understanding as we struggle with our technology. Take care of yourselves and stay safe. Thank you so much. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Alyssa.